Good evening and welcome to the April 24th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. The meeting is now called to order. First order of business is to appoint a Board Secretary Pro Tem. As provided in the agenda pertinent facts, it is recommended that Vice President Cindy Garlock be appointed to serve as Board Secretary Pro Tem for this evening's board meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Mishba. Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
President Tominski.
Aye.
Vice President Garlock.
Aye.
Superintendent Grover, I'll turn the meeting over to you. Oh. Yep, sorry. That's good. We would actually like to begin our meeting with a moment of silence to recognize one of our staff members. I'll turn the meeting over to Joselyn Hannah, who is the Associate Principal at McKinley Steam Academy.
Good evening. I'm Joselyn Hannah, I'm the Associate Principal at McKinley Steam Academy. Jason Blacker passed away on Sunday, April 9th, 2023. Jason was born in Waterloo, Iowa, and graduated from La Porte City High School and continued his education at Mount Mercy University. He began his role with the Cedar Rapids School District in August of 2022. Jason made a huge impact on the McKinley community. Mr. Blacker was always kind and thoughtful in class towards his students and colleagues. He was soft spoken, patient, and consistently helpful with everyone he helped. You could always see him at after-school activities cheering on the students. As we observe this moment of silence in memory of Jason Blacker, let us remember the lives of the students and staff that Jason have positively impacted as an employee of our school district.
Superintendent Grover, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, President Tominski. And to the rest of the board, tonight I'd like to start with a student celebration. This student is from Kennedy High School, a sophomore, Tori Pega. She competed for the National American Legion Oratorical Contest this weekend. And I would say at the national level, I want to emphasize that. Tori was the local, district, area, and state champion. We had the opportunity to listen to her speech on April the 12th. This weekend, she made it to the semifinals. This is a significant honor, not only for her, but for us, our communities, and the Hawa'ata American Legion Post 735. We'd like to thank the Legion Post for their continued support of these opportunities for our students. On Friday, April 21st, many of our schools participated in Earth Day activities. Students and staff canvassed their school grounds and surrounding neighborhoods. One middle schooler exclaimed, "We got to clean up the earth." I had the joy of working with Roosevelt Creative Corridor Business Academy and watched them and worked alongside them as they celebrated Earth Day. Yes, this is an opportunity for us to honor our volunteers. Last Friday morning at Grantwood Elementary, we recognized 39 of the building's volunteers. School staff hosted the event and the Grantwood G. Clef Fourth and Fifth Grade Show Choir serenaded to "Group." What a treat. Can't wait for you to see that group in action. Just prior to our school board meeting tonight, we celebrated our Volunteer Hall of Fame for the 22-23 school year. We honored 33 volunteers from each of our schools. We would also like to congratulate our 22-23 outstanding building volunteer and the Governor's Volunteer Award honoring Tristan Lashley from Kenwood Leadership Academy. I would like to take a point of privilege here tonight to welcome to Cedar Rapids Community School District new administrators. I would like to welcome the following new administrators. Darius Ballard, he's an internal hire from Washington High School. He has been named the New Chief of Human Resources effective July 1st, 2023, pending board approval here tonight. Sarah Cruz, she will serve as the Director of Behavior Supports effective July 1st, 2023. Also, Ryan Reedstrom, he's another internal hire. He's been named the Chief of Staff and Board Secretary. Dr. Sandy Schmitz will be the new Executive Director of Behavior Supports effective July 1st. And Mark Timmeram has been named the Executive Director of Elementary School Education effective July 1st, pending board approval. We have a few other administrator hires and hope to complete those soon. We have 15 interesting applicants as of today for our Executive Director of High Schools. We have 12 applicants for Jefferson High School and 10 for Washington High School. We will begin the hiring process for those positions in the coming weeks, so we want to provide that update so the campuses can be aware. With us tonight, we do have Mark Timmeram. He came down, so I'd like to ask him to come to the podium just briefly, just to introduce himself, so we can get familiar with him. Just where are you coming from and why are you excited to be here in Cedar Rapids?
Yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve in Cedar Rapids. My wife and I are very excited to join the Cedar Rapids community. We enjoy the culture and we have friends here and just have been around Cedar Rapids for some time. And now it's the opportunity to come here and join the team and be a good team member and help forward the work that you've already started. And I've got to spend about two and a half hours with Eric during my interview and then also in a follow-up interview with Dr. Grover and Eric. And we just, the things that you have going on, I was excited about. They align with very much with what I believe. I've been in education for over 30 years and I've been a principal for 17 of those. And so a lot of my practices align with a lot of the things you're doing currently. So it gets a good match and I'm really excited to get to work meeting everybody and being a team member, so.
Wonderful, thank you. We look forward to working with you as well. And also, we have Ryan, if you come up and introduce yourself here tonight.
Hi, I'm Ryan Reedstrom. I'm so excited that Dr. Grover has taken a chance and hired me as Chief of Staff and I can't wait to be a fiercely passionate advocate, ally, and leader for all everyone that I serve. And so, thank you and can't wait to get going.
Wonderful. We also would like to thank everyone that participated in the hiring process. We have a number of people from the campus and the district level, so we definitely appreciate the time that's invested because hiring of our staff is one of the most important things we do to support our students. I would like to remind everyone of our listening tours for the staff, the dates they are here as I continue to go out and learn from, directly from our staff members as well as our community members, just gain a lot of rich information to help propel us forward. And lastly, for the Board of Education, tonight you will have the opportunity on the consent agenda to vote on the renovation and the lease for City View. As I enter the school district, I am excited to pick up the baton and champion the efforts for college and career readiness here in our school system. On May 8th, I hope to come back for a work session where we can really get into some of the details around the five-year, the complete five-year plan for City View as it relates to curriculum. We'd like to also be able to present to you a date in the life of a student in the City View program so that you can see what their schedule would look like, what type of classes they will be taking, and their experiences. We also would like to be able to present to you a recruitment and retention plan for students as well as staff, along with the business partners. As well as, I am fully committed to be able to also help support the equity initiatives for our students to make sure that there is a focus on access, opportunity, and achievement for all students within our district so that they have awareness of this program and how they can benefit from it. I would like to thank the team for all of the efforts that you all have put into just getting this started for us. This will be a national model. We won a national grant. I know that people from all over the country, they already have eyes on us as it relates to the project. And with your vote tonight, it will allow us to move forward with the renovation for this project so that we will have a state-of-the-art facility ready for the fall for the 150 students that have already committed to the program. Thank you. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you for the report. Are there any board reports? Vice President Garlock.
I have a short legislative update. Last week, there were two education-focused bills that passed both the Senate and the House in the State Capitol. Both bills are now on their way to the governor for her signature. One of them, we refer to as the Governor's Transparency Bill or the Parents' Bill of Rights. It includes several components dealing with library materials, gender identity, use of pronouns, the removal of HIV/AIDS, HPV instruction, along with a few other things. The second bill is Senate File 391, also known as the Governor's School Flexibility Legislation. As I said, that one too is awaiting her signature. This one has various components as well, but some of the highlights have to do with school librarians and who may be hired to serve as a school librarian. It reduces some of the requirements for foreign language offerings and some of the fine art offerings. Also, an item in there that allows us no more than five days or 30 hours of online instruction, as that might pertain to snow days or something like that. So both of these bills have pages and pages of components. I would encourage you all to take a look at them. Like I said, they're on the way to the governor, so they will be in force next year. Thank you.
Chair Borcheting.
Yeah, I just want to share that ISB is going to be having a conference for school board members this Thursday and Friday. And super proud of Nicole Quaker and Adam Zimmerman and Gillian Schulte, who along with President Tominski and myself will be presenting on magnet schools to other school boards just to kind of provide some information on innovative curriculum and approach. So, great job to everybody to put the slides together. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to share our innovation with the rest of the districts in Iowa.
Any other reports? Next, we'll hear from those who've requested to address the board. Cindy, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address the board?
Yes, we do.
How many speakers do we have signed up for public comment?
We have nine.
With nine speakers this evening, you will each be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time allotted to each speaker. Cindy will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the board and choose not to speak, in the interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. In order to abide by the Open Meetings Law, there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speakers that the board is unable to address personnel and student matters. There is a process outlined in board policy which provides guidance on how to address and resolve concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to please state your name and address for the record when called to the podium. Cindy, please call our first speaker.
Our first speaker is Joni McMahon, and she will be speaking about Harrison School.
Joni McMahon, 606 Fifth Avenue Southeast, Save CR Heritage. Dear Board of Education, Save Cedar Rapids Heritage urges you to follow the recommendation of the task force that spent months examining data regarding Harrison and Madison Elementary Schools. The 18-member group of parents, teachers, principals, and other school district employees carefully considered the two options presented to them: whether Harrison should be renovated or if Madison should be demolished in order to build a new school on its site. Demolishing the culturally and historically important Harrison School was never considered as an option, for good reason. With its unique English Tudor and Gothic design by Cedar Rapids architect, Harry Hunter, the two-story building is the most architecturally significant of the city's elementary schools. The building is structurally sound and with proper maintenance could last for many more generations. This area of Cedar Rapids lost so much in the 2008 flood that demolishing this cultural asset would show a severe lack of consideration to its residents as well as the city as a whole. The task force recommendation to upgrade and expand Harrison would demonstrate the district's commitment to sustainability, as neither school would need to be sent to the landfill and it would help avoid significantly environmentally costly emissions. With estimates for the new Trailside School totaling nearly $30 million, the cost difference between constructing a new school or upgrading the current Harrison School and building an addition would be negligible. Ultimately, we believe it is in the best interest of students for Cedar Rapids to keep its neighborhood schools. Imagine if the millions of dollars diverted from Save funding would have been used for maintenance and improvements to our current schools rather than demolishing local schools. Trends in education come and go. Will the district send these new buildings to the landfill each time or be a good steward of natural resources and taxpayer money by being more adaptable and flexible? We strongly support doing what is best for our students, teachers, and staff and find it difficult to believe that removing walkable neighborhood schools was in the best interest of our students. Studies have shown that removing neighborhood schools negatively impacts students of lower socioeconomic status, particularly for families who lack reliable transportation. Finally, while district officials ask Save CR Heritage what should be kept from Harrison to honor its history, well, that would be comparable to killing an elephant to display its tusks. Both are contradictory. If the district and whatever forces, drivees and decisions insist on a new school, we ask that Harrison be spared and the Madison site chosen for the new building. Destroying this historic asset does nothing to honor its history and only teaches our children that we live in a throwaway society. Thank you for your consideration of our children and their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Terry Phillips, and Terry will be speaking on Harrison Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I have Terry Phillips, and I have two addresses. I rent a house here in Cedar Rapids in 1204 Elmhurst by Mount Mercy, but my permanent address is 1605 Riverside Road down in Washington County. I've been a contractor for over 50 years, and I've had many opportunities to work with old buildings, and I've learned a few things from them, and I'd like to share my thoughts with you if I may. I want to talk about sustainability, I want to talk about economics, and I want to talk about stewardship, if I may. Sustainability, the carbon footprint of the Harrison building is virtually nothing now. All the carbon that was emitted during the construction, the manufacturing, the fabrication of everything there has been absorbed by the trees. Few of those trees are no longer with us after the storm we had a couple, three years ago. But it's, there's nothing there that is hurting our environment as far as carbon goes. The moment you start up the excavator to destroy that building, the carbon footprint grows immensely. And it's something I think you should really, really consider because climate change is real. With the floods that we've had here in Cedar Rapids and the trees that we lost in the duration, it would be hard pressed not to recognize that climate change is real. And I think it's the duty of the school board to be aware of that as well. Economics is something that oftentimes gets overlooked. With new construction, you almost have less than 50% of the labor that's involved with new construction being local. Most of the stuff is manufactured and fabricated in distant places and brought in. But with renovation, you'll have two-thirds to three-quarters of it being local labor, people who live right here in town, who eat in the restaurants, who maybe stay in the hotels or whatever. It's an economic, it has an economic impact for Cedar Rapids, and I think that's very important. As a school board, you take and try to provide a learning environment for your students, of course, but you also look at how you can make, provide the knowledge and the conditions for those students to go out and be professional, or excuse me, productive members as far as jobs go. I think you also have another opportunity, that that is to be able to provide some jobs for these people. It doesn't take much to say, okay, we're going to make sure we're going to have all the jobs we can right here in Cedar Rapids. It helps everyone when you do that. The other is stewardship. I grew up on a farm in Van Buren County down south. My dad was a tenant on that farm, and he worked there for about 25 years. The owner of the farm came to him and says, "I want to sell you the farm." And he said, "Oh, I can't buy that." He had six kids, had very little money. But she recognized that during that time, he took care of the ground. He was a good steward of it. She sold him the farm for a third of its value. She recognized that. We have that to hear with Harrison. The people who built that building, whether it be the school board members who decided what to do, or whether it be the engineers, the architects, or the persons who actually were doing the work, they put a lot into that. Many of them did that simply because they wanted to have a paycheck to start with, but almost every one of them wanted it to last for generations, to last 100 years. It's not quite there yet, but it can be there very easily. It can last for many, many more generations. So if you're thinking about what they did, and if you want to acknowledge that, I don't want to say honor, but simply acknowledge that, think seriously about, do you have a good reason to tear it down? These people put a lot into that. And it's well worth your time to think about the legacy that you leave for the students that are going through the schools right now that have graduated, the students that will be there in the future. Do you respect what these people did nearly 100 years ago? I'm sure you do, but I'm asking you to think more openly about that, if you will. I would love to have you spend some more time getting input from citizens and people who we are living in community, even from people like me who are outside the community but doing a lot of work in the community. I'm sure there's a lot of people that would love to be able to visit with you and try to help you reach the right decision. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Phil Creachy. Phil will be speaking on the school bond issue and requests for information.
Thank you. My name is Phil Creachy. I live at 1871 Ellis Boulevard. Actually, I met with John Galbraith and Carla Hogan on January 30th, and we talked about a lot of the elements of the facility master plan. I was talking with them specifically about Wilson and my concern about that school. And Mr. Galbraith said that they were going to have the architects review the construction plans, the original construction plans for the school, to see if there was feasibility to renovating it rather than demolishing it. And I saw him again on March 23rd at the Northwest Neighbors Neighborhood Association meeting, and he said at that time that the architects had finished their review and that he had turned the project over at that time to contractors to get some estimates. I wrote him again, and I told him at that time I would like to get some information about those reports. I've, I guess depending on what the architects said in their review, I would like to see those same construction plans reviewed by an engineer that I would retain for that I wrote to him last week and I asked him at that time if I could get that information from him. I haven't heard back, and so I have no question for the board, but I'd like to ask a favor, and that is if someone could contact Mr. Galbraith and ask him to respond to my email, I'd be very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Don Taylor, speaking on the Harrison-Madison issue.
Well, I served on the committee that spent time trying to decide whether we wanted to close Madison or Harrison, and I guess I represent the Northwest Neighborhood Association. But my church, Trinity St. James, serves Taylor and Harrison both, and we take care of the teachers for parent-teacher conferences and for Teacher Appreciation Week. We turn it into a week instead of a day. But my concern, I guess I'm confused because when we, when we were given the information as a committee, we were told to decide whether we wanted to keep Harrison or whether we wanted to keep Madison. And as we discussed it, Madison would be taken down and a new Madison be built and Harrison would be Harrison would be remodeled. We didn't ever hear anything about Harrison being taken down and being rebuilt at all. So I'm confused by that possibility at all because we were never even given the opportunity to consider it, which I find confusing. I'm a retired teacher and a retired principal, and I understand that you have to make tough decisions sometimes. I get it. They did a lot more research than I did on the environment and all of that stuff. My concern is kids. I, as a principal, I cared about teachers and kids, and that's what I still care about. And I just hope that as you make your choices, care about the kids, care about the education. Those are the two, the two only important things.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mara Pilcher, speaking on Harrison-Madison.
Hello again. I saw many of you just a little bit ago at the volunteer recognition ceremony. And I was really, it was exciting because the theme of it was that volunteers take the ordinary and make our schools extraordinary. And I just, I was sitting there, and I mean, these are my horrible notes, so I'm going to be all over the place, hopefully not too confusing. But I also served on the volunteer task force, this task force that we've all been talking about. And we spent months working on this decision. And we, this, these months would be two-hour-long meetings at the end of long days, and these were teachers, these were principals, these were staff members, these were community members, families, that all had a lot of things to do at the end of the day, but we chose to volunteer our time to serve on this task force. We chose to volunteer our time to pour over all of the facts, to select an architectural firm, to do all of this work and look into the funding models, to look into tax credits, to look into walk around Harrison with an architect. I took days off work, as did a lot of people, to do this work as a volunteer because I believe in this process, even though I was told that some of these decisions have gotten overturned in the past. I was like, no, we've selected an architecture firm. This process is going so much better this time. They're transparent. They're meeting with Northwest Neighbors. We're involving the community that will have, that will be affected by this decision. Like you've already heard, we had two options: tear down Madison and rebuild new there or rehab Harrison. Those were the two options presented to us, and that's the only thing we discussed in those, since November, these meetings that we've been attending. And the decision was made, a vote with all the facts laid out, a vote was taken, and seven to four were in favor of rehabbing Harrison. Okay, our work was done. It was going to go to the next level, it was going to go out to the community meeting in the Northwest Neighbors, and then to you all. So you can imagine how, I mean, honestly, I felt disrespected. I did. And I'm sure a lot of the volunteers and staff members that participated in that also felt disrespected. When we get, you know, hit on the side of the head with this decision that came out to all of us via email, we were on a task force. We thought we were part of the decision-making process, and it got overturned in days, our month's worth of work. And all we were trying to do was make our schools extraordinary. That's what you claim volunteers do, and that's what we were doing. Harrison is extraordinary, and it can be even better, and it can serve our community. And so we are really, we, it hurts personally, but also I don't think it's the best decision for this school, as we discussed by the task force. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lawrence Winkowski, and he has many topics.
Lawrence Winkowski, 4234 Earl Road. First comment I want to say about the Harrison School on that, it doesn't affect me what happens there, but it should be a community decision of the people who live in that area. If it costs a million dollars for it to renovate it, it should stay there. I mean, keep it. You know, we have these things where, oh, people from the northeast side are commenting on things that have, that exist on the southwest side. Now, I don't live, we don't live there. The people who live in an area should be the ones who comment on, or have the biggest say in it. Over the weekend, I was watching a TV program, and they were talking about slavery and the impact it made on the wealth of the nobles in England. And I thought about this and other things. I said, you know, I think this school district should have a comprehensive, a class that's comprehensive on slavery, starting back in ten or a thousand, three thousand DC or whatever, and that, non-bias, so people understand that this isn't something that just happened in a new world, to get cotton picked. And I think it would be very educational for the younger people to understand the full effects of it. Last week, I seen something on Facebook. Let's see, anyone know what this is? Some of yous might. If I was driving down the road and I seen a kid doing that to me, I'd probably go, or I might go. But, you know, I would not, I didn't know until last week. I asked my wife what it was. She didn't know. What it stands for is Help Me. It's this distress thing that people who, like children, or could even be an adult, needs signaled so they can get help without making a lot of noise. I seen this. I went ahead and I forwarded the post to, on Facebook, over to our communication department or whoever, and that, and they said, you know, basically, hey, thank you for sharing. I haven't seen it spread anyway. You know, because the other thing I said, it should be taught in every classroom. And I always say, you know, you can teach it in the classroom, but if the adults don't know what it means outside of the classroom, who are we helping? And that. And I think that it should be put on our website. It should be shared totally throughout the community and even work with the city to do that. And that, we want, if we can save one kid or help one kid or person, whatever, that's a good thing. Oh, good to go in there. And also, like with that last meeting, there was a guy talking about how we need these people monitoring all this stuff for security and that. But the one thing he did not talk about was the root cause, nothing. He didn't say anything about people being more responsible gun owners, or people should give up their guns. How about mental illness, or mental illness, you know, we should put more into that, or parents being active, triactive parenting, and that. None of that was said. You know, whatever you do, we have to address the root cause of the problem, you know. Alls we're doing is spending money and putting Band-Aids on top of things. The other thing was, in the past, Nancy might have remembered this, I've said we should start meetings later. And over the weekend, I came up with the perfect reason why, because this meeting time interferes with happy hour. And if I look into, you look at the audience, ah, they could use happy hour. It would make people more talkative. They'd come up here and voice their opinion more. It might make the board more talkative so we can understand why they are making some of the decisions they are. And I just think it would be a great thing. So I think we should move this school board meetings to like 6:30, so we make it through happy hour and that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Stouffer Hunter, speaking on the decision on Harrison School
Good evening, board members. It's a pleasure to meet Superintendent Grover for the first time. My name is Mark Stouffer Hunter, and like Teri, I do a lot of work in Cedar Rapids, so I'm going to give you a Cedar Rapids address of my mom's house, 2856 Fourteenth Avenue Southeast. And I am in Davenport at 802 Bridge Avenue. I've been involved in history programming and projects with the Cedar Rapids School District for almost thirty years now, and have been a Cedar Rapids historian for even longer than that in this community. At the end of 2017, when the initial public details came out about the facilities master plan, which involved the potential closing of eight elementary schools and tend to be potentially replaced and demolished and with, replaced with new buildings, I was, began a very consistent messaging going into 2018 that three of those eighteen existing elementary schools had a much high, a very high degree of historical integrity. That was Harrison School, Arthur School, and Garfield School. We continued that consistent messaging into a public forum that was held in January 2018 at the Public Library that I was involved with as one of the participants of that, in front of that audience, when Superintendent Buck was here. Again, a consistent messaging that even of those three, Arthur, Garfield, and Harrison, that Harrison had a particularly high level of historic integrity owing to its architect, its architecture, its significance to the neighborhood, and what it means to Cedar Rapids on the whole. Enough of this discussion early on led to a change in the facilities master planning in regards to referring to Harrison School going into 2018 and 2019, that if Harrison is considered on the schedule, they will look at renovation and not just demolition. And that became part of the regular language on that. That was intensified in late 2019 when Superintendent Norrie Bush came on a history tour on a bus sponsored by Save Sierra Heritage to learn more about the history of these Cedar Rapids elementary buildings. Going into 2020, I was honored to be asked by Superintendent Bush to be involved in the process of helping make decisions on what's going to happen to some of these elementary buildings, understanding that they do have different degrees of historic integrity. When Coolidge and Truman were torn down, I can say nothing but accolades to the city staff and principals at those schools for helping me as a historian and other historians to do photographic historic documentation of those buildings for the community and save historic relics. And those buildings are of, those are two of the thirty that the Cedar Rapids School District built in the baby boom era between 1949 and 1974. Harrison's different, and Garfield and Arthur were different. So just a short time ago, when the decision was made about Garfield and Arthur, I felt like the superintendents listened and the school staff listened. They made a decision to build a new building at the Arthur Annex Site, and although the existing Arthur and Garfield buildings were not going to be used at schools anymore, they are as, as far as I know right now, potentially available for repurposing within the Cedar Rapids community, like so many former public school buildings have been, and thus preserving the history of those buildings in those neighborhoods. I was on the task force for the Harrison-Madison question, starting in November. I was proud to serve on that. Again, like the others I've mentioned here tonight, we were only presented with options of thoroughly investigating either, you know, removing the existing Madison building, putting a new building there, and only renovating and expanding Harrison to a point where it would have all the benefits of new building on the inside of the existing building and a very large addition, and still retain a historic facade and historic elements in the building that were so important to that school building. And as mentioned earlier tonight, just two weeks ago, all of a sudden, we were never told that there would suddenly be a new concept presented to the community that would completely disregard all the work that we had put in for months, trying to go for one or the other. If we had thought that that was an opportunity, we probably wouldn't have put the energy we did into that, knowing that neither one of our outcomes are going to happen. Harrison is super important. We can have the benefits of a new building and have the history at the same time. One point five million dollars more, you're going to spend about two hundred million on a bunch of new buildings and demolition continuing over the next few years, and that's fine. The one point five million to restore Harrison, it's worth the money.
Excuse me, Mark. Your time is up. Thank you.
The history is worth the money. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Weisenberger, speaking about the Harrison Elementary.
Excuse me. I'm Jeff Weisenberger, 1651 Eleventh Street Northwest. As you will know, that is literally two blocks from Harrison Elementary School. I, my family moved here in 1978, and I see a couple of my neighbors here. I went to Harrison along with a couple of my neighbor's kids, along with my older sister and older brother. Kind of beside the point, other than the fact that it's an incredibly cool old building, and it's meant something to all of us in the community. More so, I want to talk about the fact that I literally found out about this meeting that this was happening at about 4:45. I've been in construction for twenty-five years. I had an appointment I was supposed to be at tonight. I called and canceled the appointment, rescheduled it to be here because we've had forty-eight hours since this was announced on your guys' website on Friday evening after hours of business, so that it was sitting over the weekend, and then you had one business day for the public to know about it, and then for you guys to make your decision. It baffles me, to be honest with you. It baffles me that a board can unilaterally make a decision against a board, against the recommendation of a group that you guys hired to make a recommendation to you, a group that is professionals in construction, not managing a school district, but in construction. You hired people to do a job, and you didn't let them do it. That is baffling to me. I do not understand this concept whatsoever. Tearing down Harrison was not on the table. You took the recommendation, you threw it aside and said, well, we're going to do this instead. We're going to have a vote on it, which we all know is a mere formality. Sorry, it's just frustrating to me. Not to mention, this is a school that is, I believe, the only neighborhood school in the district, if I'm not mistaken. Not a single kid gets bused to Harrison. Is that correct? And we're going to bus kids during the time of construction, I'm assuming, while it's being torn down and the new school's being built. It did say on your guys' website that I just literally read while the meeting was beginning, that there would be no additional cost for the kids being bused to the families or taxpayers. I mean, that's just not true, because we will be paying for it because we pay for everything that the school district pays for, if not mistaken. As far as the monetary decision, I heard mention of a million or a million five difference between the cost of a new school, but the most recent school didn't cost the twenty-nine million dollars that it was budgeted at, and it ended up costing thirty, if I'm not mistaken. So it actually costs more than the proposed budget to renovate Harrison. If that's, are those numbers, I'm assuming those numbers are correct. I'm sorry, I'm looking, literally my notes were written in the last, you know, twenty minutes or whatever because didn't know about this meeting. I was actually not in town this weekend, I was in Michigan. But, yeah, I just, I'm honestly just at a loss for words. I've been in construction for twenty-five years. After the flood of '08, I was a consultant to the city for the CDBG project. I found a brick, we found the old Harrison Elementary Site when we were demoing a house. We paused, we contacted the Historical Society, they came out, they documented it, and I had a brick of the original Harrison Elementary School that burned down in 1929. And to my knowledge, it's still at the current Harrison Elementary School. This is a part of our neighborhood where it just is baffling to me that we would tear down this when we know that children learn just by walking through the doors of a school and seeing the architecture. The last thing I'll say is I've done a lot of projects over the The last thing I'll say is I've done a lot of projects over the years with world-renowned architects. Carlos Jimenez is one of them. A project we did was designed specifically for children to learn just by walking in the school, and he said it will never learn as well as walking through a historical building.
Thank you, Jeff. Our last speaker is Tanya Johnson, and she's speaking on retention and recruitment of teachers.
Tanya Johnson, thirty-eight, sixteen Riverside Drive Northeast. I think I'm going to switch gears just a little bit from our Harrison discussion, but not my usual positivity that I usually bring, so sorry for that. I went to school in Cedar Rapids, taught in the district for thirty-three years, AK teacher, kindergarten teacher, resolution team facilitator, and now instructional coach at Nixon. My own children went to Cedar Rapids Schools, and next year, my daughter will start her teaching career in Cedar Rapids. I have been a very proud employee of Cedar Rapids Schools, and what I have to share makes me very sad for our students, our teachers, and staff, and our district. This is my first year at Nixon Elementary. I've been amazed at the way the behavior team works with students, helps them de-escalate, talking through problems they are having, and celebrating with them when they earn their goals. I share my office with two of the behavior team. I've never heard a complaint from them. I hear them playing games with students, talking about Pokemon cards, and just giving some of our toughest students the time they need to be heard and to enjoy time with an adult. I also quite often have heard students, or have students asking me, where is Ms. Cat? Where is Mr. Liam? They don't care about me, they care about them. These people are loved by many students and staff, even though they are the ones that need to be called when a student is out of control. They see these students when they're at their worst. Because of rules from the DOJ, staff are now not allowed to touch students. This sounds like a no-brainer, but there are many times touching a student, holding a hand, placing a hand on a student's back, is the best way to keep them safe and keep them calm. Many times, special ed and autism students need hands-on to keep them safe and to keep them from running away. Also, teachers, even elementary teachers, have students that fight, and they need to try and keep the students apart by putting their bodies in between them and to keep them from hurting each other. Last week, I talked to a brand-new special ed's teacher who's been in tears because she can't do her job without touching her students, and she doesn't want to be fired. Also, what are the rules for teachers and staff getting hurt? In our building, I am sure in other buildings as well, we have teachers, secretaries, and other staff that get hit, kicked, bit, and pinched on a daily basis. No one signs up for this job to get hurt. If we are going to get rid of staff who are holding a child's wrist safely, then why are we not able to get more work for our teachers who are being hurt every day? This is not how we retain teachers in our district. We have lost many amazing teachers and staff who cannot handle this climate or lack of Another activity our district is doing for special ed right now is they are not hiring teachers in pairs for specific positions. Instead, they are trying to hire people for the district and then placing them in positions. This is not a way to recruit staff. No person wants to be hired not knowing what their job will be or where they'll be working. As the country continues to demean the teaching profession, and we have less and less students deciding to be teachers, and less of those students graduating to be teachers, we need to do everything we can to help them be successful and want to come to Cedar Rapids to teach. Now, some will come because they grew up in Cedar Rapids and want to teach here, like myself and my daughter, but some will move to Cedar Rapids and won't know where they want to teach. They will look for schools that have support, where teachers are happy and supported by principals, and where they have mentoring to start their career. We used to have a mentoring and induction position in Cedar Rapids several years ago, before teacher leadership money came from the state. We had a position for a couple of years, and then it was absorbed into another position. When that person switched jobs, then it was gone. How can the district say that they are about recruitment and retention of teachers when you don't even have a mentoring facilitator? Our new teachers deserve someone from the district checking on them and supporting them. As our new superintendent, I'm so glad to see you're having listening tour. However, in this district, in the last five years, we've had special ed listening sessions, listening sessions for two new superintendents, and many people are done sharing hope because nothing has been done. Overall, I've said a lot. I think what I want you to hear is our staff needs to feel supported. They work tirelessly to teach and care for and love CRCSD students, and our staff need to care and be loved for by the district.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes public comment. Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or separate vote?
President Tominski, I would like to pull items two-two dash two-three, I'm sorry, two-three dash two-three-three and two-three dash two-three-four.
Say that one more time, sorry.
Two-two, three-three-three. Two-two, two-three-three. Two-two, two-three-four.
Two-three-three and two-three-three-four.
Yes.
Okay. That's the IASB membership renewal and the twenty-eight E agreement?
So, so it's two-three.
Two-three.
Three-three-four.
Yep, so that's the twenty-eight E agreement.
Two-three, three-three-five. Yeah, it's the twenty-eight E.
Okay.
Oh, so the preliminary approval, City View, okay, all right.
Three-three-four, three-three-five.
BA twenty-three, three-three-five.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
And those are for separate vote?
Second one.
President Tominski, I just have a question.
Comment on two-three, three-three-four as well, when we're ready?
Just a comment?
I mean, we're already voting on it separately, so I have one question and then a comment as well.
Okay. So let's vote on the rest of the consent agenda minus. Prove that consent agenda.
I move two. Consent agenda, consent agenda, and two-three, three-three-four, and BA two-three, three-three-five.
Is there a second? This is a poll. For this one as well.
Director Merschbach. Director Newman. Director Humbles. Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Borcherting.
Aye.
President Tominski.
Aye.
Vice President Garlock, aye.
So we'll next take BA twenty-three, three-three-four. This is the twenty-eight E agreement, Metro Economic Alliance, sublease and shared use of premise, premises, City View Community High School. So is it a comment, Director Merschbach?
Well, I had a question, but then I looked at three-three-five, and I was just looking for the total cost of the construction. I'm seeing it now, it's six hundred thousand, correct? Okay. The comment I wanted to make was just viewing this as an infrastructure project generally for the community. I just wanted us to be, I think this is an opportunity to be conscientious when it comes to the decision-making process and who has access to the decision-makers. And so I wanted to bring up two things that I've seen in the last few years about investments we could make, and then compare them to what we're doing tonight. And one of them was during COVID, you know, there was a lot going on during COVID, obviously, and there were times when we were offering virtual learning just as an option in general, and also there were times when we were forced to move to all virtual learning. And I believe it was the Iowa State Education Association at one time came out with a document, and they were making recommendations for how we could spend pandemic relief money in our school district. And one of those recommendations was to set up neighborhood virtual learning centers. And that would have been a temporary thing potentially, you know, you could assume, maybe it would have been permanent, but it became clear at some point that the inequality in our community was leading to inequity in the options kids had for their virtual learning environment. And so the recommendation from ISEA was set up these neighborhood, you know, it was just a potential thing to do, set up these neighborhood learning centers. It would be someplace with high-speed internet access, a safe, reliable place for kids to go and do virtual learning. And, you know, we didn't do that at the time. Another thing that we've heard from several groups is to invest in renewable energy. We heard it here tonight, take climate change seriously. I think that's something we should do as a board. And we've had both the Sunrise Movement, and recently, we had Veterans for Peace come and say the school district should invest in solar projects, and that's something that I would support, but it's something that we haven't gotten around to yet. And so when I look at this project for six hundred thousand dollars to fund this magnet program, you know, the reconstruction and that thing, it just strikes me as, this was very easy to find the money to do this project. And why isn't it as easy to find the money to do everything? There's not an unlimited amount of money, but what we choose to spend our money on, what we fund, you know, it makes a difference. Those infrastructure, like I said, this isn't just a building, a facility improvement. This is infrastructure for our community, and this infrastructure project might be good for our community, but there's many others that don't, not even, I mean, people come and they talk to us as a board, and they share their opinion on what we could do, they, you know, do advocacy. But we don't have serious hearings on those things afterwards. You know, we don't say what would it look like to do neighborhood learning centers? What would it look like to do solar projects at our facilities? Or, I've mentioned, Director Garlock has been very strong proponent of this. I mentioned before to her, we could be partnering with other school districts on a solar project at a much larger scale, but we never get to that because we never take the first step even. But this first step is very easy for us to take, and it just, it strikes me as just a matter of basic fairness, and that's what I wanted to say.
Appreciate the comment. Any additional comments before we go to vote? We can do a roll call vote, Cindy?
Director Merschbach. Director Newman.
Epstein.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Borcherting.
Aye.
President Tominski.
Aye.
Vice President Garlock, aye.
Next, we will take BA twenty-three, three-three-five. This is the preliminary approval, City View Community High School. Was there any comment or this, just a separate vote? Just separate votes, so we can do the roll call vote, Cindy?
Director Merschbach. Director Newman.
Epstein.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Borcherting.
Aye.
President Tominski.
Aye.
Vice President Garlock, aye.
And that concludes our consent agenda. Next, I'll invite John Galbrough to the podium for an update on the Harrison-Madison project.
I don't know, can you, okay. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to present the update and recommendation for the Harrison-Madison project. First of all, we would like to thank everyone who's been involved in this process. We know that there have been several different teams who have worked on the process, and as the team came forward last month, or for our last meeting, we did have the opportunity to consider a couple of different options at that particular point. I do think the team, they informed us that this, the recommendation that came forward, that it was not final at that particular time. There was a strong ask from the Board of Education for us to go out and to have the community meetings, and I do want to applaud the community members from both of those neighborhoods for coming out. They were well-attended. I think together, there were probably well over a hundred people in attendance, and several hundred who had the opportunity to complete the survey as well. One thing that rang true for both Madison and Harrison is that both of those communities, they love their school. That was loud and clear within the meetings as well as within the survey results that we received. We would like to provide some information here tonight that would speak to a number of the concerns and the questions that were raised that allowed us to get to this new concept that is presented here tonight, and certainly after John's presentation, we will entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grover, and good evening, Board of Education. We'll start with just a little review, and I'll make this brief. Two weeks ago, April tenth, we came and made an update presentation to the Board of Edu, to the Board here on the Madison-Harrison project and where we were to date. A couple of days later, we had input sessions that we held at both Harrison and Madison, like Dr. Grover had said, roughly fifty attendees at each of those events. Then April seventeenth, we provided an update to our board-appointed committee, the Master Facility Oversight Committee. We also had sent out a survey to our community via social media on our website, was also sent out by our Madison and Harrison principals to their families as well. We had roughly two hundred respondents, or just under two hundred respondents to that The key takeaways that came from the survey results and also what we heard at the listening sessions was there was a strong desire in our community for new. That desire for new rang true, was a common theme throughout the feedback we had heard. There was also concern on the cost and finance implications, student density or enrollment counts, what wraparound or community services are in each of these neighborhoods, and then Harrison history was also a strong, strong comment that we heard, again, both at the feedback sessions and from the feedback survey. So the decision factors on the recommendation that's forthcoming, what is, what is best for our students? I mean, that's always the top consideration when we're making any decision here, is what is best for our students. Next one there is what are the overall costs? So just as a reminder from last time, the project that's decided on here will be funded through SAVE. It is not from a bond issue, it will be funded through SAVE. This information was up there, and I apologize, it's a little blurry on the screen there, but the two options that were presented the last time was a new building at the Madison Site, twenty-eight point three million dollars, or renovation in addition at Harrison for twenty-eight point eight million dollars. And what is the student enrollment data? So I have some past enrollment numbers listed on there, and then our projected enrollment going forward. So as you can see, Harrison is in the two-seventy-five roughly range, where Madison is in about the one-seventy-five range, so there's roughly a hundred more students that attend Harrison than Madison, and that's held true from the last several years and is projected to stay pretty consistent with that going forward through the next five years. What other services serve the community? So as we think about what kids are doing before and after school, and if we look at the Harrison neighborhood, we have the rec center that's right next door, there's several daycare facilities, a church that has before and after-school programming, kids-on-course programming that's currently at Harrison, so there's really a lot of services within that community that serve our students outside of the school day that are very important to that community. And lastly, there is how can we honor the history? So we'll continue to work with our community on how can we honor the history of that Harrison building. I'm not an expert in that, but we have a lot of experts in the room. We'll work with our architects what can be saved. We'll have feedback from our community involved in that process as well. So with that, the recommendation that we're bringing to the Board here tonight is to build a new building at the existing Madison Site. That is just a very rough rendering, just kind of a test fit on can a new building fit on the site, similar process to what we did for an addition at Harrison.
Set Madison.
I'm sorry. Whew, good catch. New building at the existing Harrison Site. I should read from my slide a little better the next time. I apologize. So that is a test fit that our architects put together for us, just to make sure it fits, that was consistent with the process that we did for an addition on the Harrison Site or the new building at Madison. This recommendation will best serve our students, is fiscally responsible, and will honor the historical elements of the existing Harrison Building. Down there is the projected cost for this project. The new building, twenty-eight point one million dollars. The cost to demo the existing building, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and a four hundred thousand dollar line item to salvage and reinstall some of the historical elements of the existing building. So some additional considerations, what will happen to students during construction? And these were also questions that came from our feedback session, no matter what the project was. So for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, there will be no changes, and what that means is the Madison students and families will still attend Madison if they're attending that building now, and same for the Harrison students and families, they will still And same for the Harrison students and families, they will still attend Harrison. For the 24-25 school year, the Harrison students will need to be relocated. So we have a couple of options that we're still working on to come to an ultimate conclusion here. The first option would be to combine the two attendance areas and supply additional classroom space via learning cottages to the Madison site. So the, all staff and students in those two attendance areas would be located at the Madison site. The other option that we're still working on is we could relocate to open space in the district. What we feel like that would look like right now is the Arthur and Garfield buildings will be open at that point in time because Trailside will open. So we'll have space there that we could bus kids to, and they would attend that school. Transportation. So transportation during construction for the affected families will be provided by the district at no cost to those students and families. So we're committing to that now, that if those students need to be relocated while the construction's going on at Harrison, that the district would provide that transportation. Feedback and questions?
Open to the public?
No, just from the Board, sir. So just to be clear, John, the recommendation is to build a new building at the existing Harrison site.
Yes, President Timinsky, thank you.
I'll defer to fellow Board members if there's any questions.
John, could I just ask you again to read the cost? I believe that, that when you read the renovation and addition at Harrison, you read it at $28.8, but it's $29.8, correct?
The original, right? So...
Yep, the original, it's like slide three, maybe? Four?
Yes, $29,894,000.
So that is the cost for the renovation addition at Harrison?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there questions from Board members?
Yeah, I, well, I have some questions and a lot of the stuff I'd like to discuss if anyone's interested. What were the, what were the questions on the survey that went out to the community? Like, I just, I saw the comments that you shared with us, but I, was it just two questions or was there more to it?
Yes, it was just the two questions. On what feedback would you like us to hear and what questions do you have for, for the district?
So what I want to say about the survey is, that was presented in the context of the two options that we were giving, like, when people took the survey, did they think that after we got the survey responses, we would come up with another option that wasn't presented? Because it doesn't seem like anybody thought that was a possibility. And so I'm just wondering how seriously we should take these survey responses, you know, if you think one thing and someone asks you a question, you're going to answer it a certain way. But if you have a different perspective and someone asks you a question, your response might be different, you know? You hear what I'm saying? I don't know if anybody thinks that's relevant. Anybody?
John, I'll let you answer it.
I feel like that's unfair to ask John to make a supposition. I mean, there's, there's really no right or wrong there.
Do I fellow Board members, does anyone think that's a serious consideration to take, that we've changed the, you know, the possibilities? And so maybe we should take the survey data with a grain of salt? Okay.
Yeah.
So Dr. Grover, you saw here tonight, you know, how passionate people are about this issue. And you got a timeline from our historian here about a lot of the work they've done. Just to expand on that timeline, this is what happens every time we talk about this issue. When the first facility master plan was passed in early 2018, 600 people signed a petition asking the Board to take another 90 days to consider and give more time for people to, you know, find out about the plan. And the Board ignored that. Once we took the next step and decided on Arthur and Garfield, 500 people signed a petition under a new Iowa state law that allowed 500 people to sign a petition and bring an issue before the Board of Education. After that meeting, President Timinsky, you know, he talked to the news camera and he said, we got to decide what action needs to be taken. We haven't taken any action. We've ignored that as well. And so this is what happens, and we heard tonight from the people who were involved with the task force, the historical community, there's no way to do this in a popular way. And so I think we should take more time. I don't think anyone else up here agrees with me, but we obviously should take more time and build more support for this, rather than just pushing it through and hope people go along with it later. But just so you know, that's what happens when we discuss this issue. It's very unpopular, and when you go talk to people about it who aren't in tune or affected in the neighborhoods, by and large, people still don't know that it's happening. And so, kind of going back to, you know, the bigger picture, I don't know if my fellow Board members got the email I sent today, I got some information from Mr. Galbreth. So far, the three elementary schools we've built, that has been at a cost of around $82 million to the district, and that's saved money, that's all done without a vote approving anything. And again, we don't need a vote under SAVE to approve it, but at some point, very soon, we are planning to ask for hundreds of millions and more from the people. And so at this point, I think we should consider letting people vote on that, get our house in order, find out what financing we have for our secondary projects, because these projects are very expensive. You know, we're going to be over $110 million, and that's without having paid all the interest on the bonds, which are outstanding, still quite a bit of that. If I took John's numbers, I'm not a finance expert, but it seems like we still have quite a bit of interest to pay on the bonds that we've taken out against the save money, just to build these elementary schools. And while I'm sure the people in the elementary schools like them, if we can't get financing through geo-bond from the public, then we're going to need to be more fiscally responsible, bringing it back to that, with our save money in order to take care of our secondary schools.
Around Robin.
Yeah, I mean, do you have a question? Because I would like to give others the opportunity.
Someone has a question, go ahead.
Yeah. So, thank you for that. John, do you know what the historical significance of Harrison is? Like, what happened there? Is it just, is it age? Is it, was there an event? Was it...
So I'm probably not the accurate person to answer that, but I believe the age of the building and then the architectural style is an American Tudor, if I remember that correctly.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And I think there's other things that go along with that.
And then I do have a question. So you've been on, you were on the FMP from the origination, correct?
From the end of the original FMP, correct.
Okay. Can you clarify, was the committee not asked to look at a new school at Harrison as an option?
Originally, that was the plan for Harrison, was a new building.
When they, when they, so, but when the committee, when the FMP committee met and looked at Harrison-Madison, was Harrison, a new school at the Harrison location a consideration? I'm just trying to get clarification there.
Gotcha. At that point in time, no. It was between, it was between a new building at Madison and a renovation at Harrison.
Okay.
Can you maybe help us understand why those were the two options and why this third option was, was not presented?
I believe why that option wasn't looked at is we've heard from our historical people probably since 2018. I think Mark's correct on that. And from their viewpoint for these historical buildings, obviously, they would like to see them as schools first. And if they can't, no, if they can no longer operate efficiently, efficiently or effectively as a school, then they would at least like to see that building saved, so not be torn down. So then that's what drove us to the second option of a new building at the Madison site.
And can you maybe clarify, like, when a building is torn down, how much of that material goes to landfill? I mean, how do you, how do you assess that? I think we've got a couple of buildings where you can give some examples, but I think we're often hearing that all of that material is going to landfills. Just want some clarity on that.
Yeah, so I'm actually gathering that data from our two, our first two buildings that we've torn down, President Timinsky. But the majority of that doesn't go to the landfill. Any brick or concrete material is recycled, any metal material is recycled, and then the remainder goes, does go to the landfill. So if you look at the construction of these buildings, I'm going to get that data so that I completely understand, but there's a lot of metal and a lot of brick and concrete in these buildings that is being recycled. And obviously, that's being, this is sustainable practice, but when we talk about the cost of that too, our contractors, that's how they are competitive, is by doing as much recycling as they can, and that lowers the cost for us. So they're forced to do that to be competitive in nature.
Okay. I have another.
Okay. Director Borcherting, go ahead. You have a second one?
So I, I just was wondering about, when we go back and, and we're looking at that a new, when, okay, regardless of whether or not a new school at Harrison was considered, were all of the, the factors of what services exist inside each attendance area, what support services there are for before and after care, what co-locations are there? Was in, in the enrollment, I know enrollment data was considered, but I'm wondering, were the support services also considered when we were thinking about the combination of these two attendance areas? So did we, did we consider, like, kids-on-course and before and after school, like, if Waypoint is in buildings? Did we consider which buildings had ongoing programming and support?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That was considered for both Harrison and Madison?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's specifically about wraparound, right?
Right.
Yeah, because I think I see in the slide, right, the input sessions provided that. Director, you good? Director Round? Yep. Director Humbles?
I thought she was saying that she had a question. She looked away. Yeah. And I guess my question is, because I'm hearing folks say that there were two options available when and, and attending both of the informational sessions. So going to the Plan B, possibly with demolition or Harrison and rebuilding, is that based on the survey information? Because I know Dexter, Director Merschbra was saying the survey that they filled out would have been, it had been filled out differently with different questions if the option would have been the Harrison in there. Does that make sense? I think that's what you were trying to say.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any way, yeah, I don't think there's any way to know, like Director Borcherting was saying, it's not necessarily something we can know, but I can imagine that if people thought there were different options, they might have thought of it differently, provided different answers.
Well, and I just want to be mindful of the time and commitment that community members have made on this, towards this project. It's, it's a, it's a long project. It's ultimately designed to positively impact students and our community and our district. I, I am a little reluctant. I'm concerned that we haven't had a chance for community feedback on the third option, when it's been provided on A and B.
Right, and I think the timeline is the last Board meeting, you gave the presentation, we had the listening session first at Madison and then Harrison. Like you said, about 50 people. I know several Board members attended invitations from the community, and I was happy to see them be well-attended. I think certainly questioning the, you know, the surveys, but, you know, it seemed like there was clearly trends, you know, in that, in that data. So I am curious with that third option, if given more time, listening to the community.
So are you saying, Director Borcherting, that we need additional time? Just to...
I, I...
Because it is a, a big decision that it impacts our community.
I would like additional time. I would suggest possibly tabling this until we have the opportunity. I would make a motion to table this until we have an opportunity to get feedback on option, on the third option, which we haven't had community feedback on. Yeah.
Black, you have a question?
Yeah, could, could we get some information about timeline in terms of, like, if we decide to table this until our next meeting, how, how does that condense the timeline for construction and bidding? What, what effect would that have?
Ultimately, if it was, so if we're going to push this for two weeks, you could slide that schedule for two weeks, is really what we're looking at there.
Director Newman?
I, I just need a little clarification on the original directive of the, the group that came together. They were asked to determine whether to, I'm sorry, I know it's been explained, I just want to understand. Because their decision was essentially to keep two schools. Was the decision ever to make? Okay.
Do you want to re-explain what the, what the decisions were that were before the committee?
What were they asked to decide?
Before the task force?
Yes.
So to evaluate the possibility of an addition renovation on Harrison or a new building at the Madison site?
Or.
An or.
So, so it was either, it was one or the other?
One or the other, yep. Both, doing both projects wasn't an option, it was one or the other.
Okay.
And it was a new facility on Madison's site, so, you know, demolishing Madison, new building on that site, or I think the current size of Harrison would be less than half of what the addition was. I think there was an additional 50,000 square feet.
Correct.
That was built onto that site.
Right. I just heard through the comments earlier, it sounded like maybe some people think the direction was to, or the decision was made to build new on Madison and renovate Harrison. So, okay.
I just want to maybe kind of circle back to some of the conversations around this project. And again, definitely want to honor the process, as someone mentioned, several months of having the discussions. And I do believe that what we heard from the last Board meeting was to be able to go out and get feedback. And I think it was very prudent on behalf of the team that they provided open-ended questions to the survey, basically, what are your comments? And so if you were to ask the people to vote, so if you, if they were in Madison, as I said earlier, people were very passionate about staying in the Madison community. People are very passionate about staying in the Harrison community. So during our discussions, what we attempted to do was to try to look for what were other things besides the location of where it was. And so the idea of new, that people wanted a new facility, when they talked about the student population, that there are more students over in the Harrison attendance zone, and they, they have been seeing an increase, whereas it's been a steady decline over in the Madison area. The other consideration was the fact of the $1.5 million more. That rang true on the survey as well as the, the community meetings, but also the history, the history part of it. So I just want to make sure that I state that as well. And so I do believe that it was clear that the team, and if I'm, if you, if this is different from what I understand, because I'm gathering information at this point, that they brought forth a recommendation, but nothing was final at that particular point. And I know that that is always hard, and I think it's very difficult, and I think we also heard that there were only 11 people who voted. So like you say, this is never easy. And as we're thinking about trying to make a decision, and so coming to honor everything we heard with a louder voice. So the louder feedback... ...came from the meetings as well as the surveys in a reaction to it. Of course, we would do whatever is the pleasure of the Board, but I just want to circle back to some of those deciding factors. And that was the cost in which this option does reduce that cost. That was a concern that we heard. Again, the enrollment, again, the wraparound services. And so when we come back to our responsibility here as it relates to how do we best serve students, and of course, and then looking to the standard that the district has set, that's the reason why the new concept is on the table.
I, I think this is a really productive discussion, so if no one minds, I have a few more things to just mention here. And coming from the survey responses, there was talk about equity, you know, for the Harrison neighborhood regarding, compared to those buildings that we've already built. And I just want to point out, it's like, the inequity is something that is created because of the buildings we built, you know? It's like, we decided to build new buildings on the West Side suburbs, near the Country Globe on the East Side, and now people are saying, well, why not get a new building for me as well? And I think we should go and really look at what are the alternatives? And if we're going to get more feedback, you know, and not move forward with this recommendation tonight, which I'm happy to vote on a motion about, I think we should be looking at other alternatives. We're concerned about 1.5 million. If we put 10 million into each of the two buildings now, that's $8 million less than the recommendation. What does that fiscal plan look like? What is that extra money? What could that be invested in? If you put solar panels, like Director Garlock has mentioned in the past, how does that money feed back into the buildings and help hire staff, raise salaries, you know, get individual specials teachers for each building? We haven't even explored opportunities like that. The only other thing I want to say, and I just want to make sure that we say this, we heard a lot about Harrison tonight, but the emails that I got as a Board member, a lot of them came from the Madison community and even staff at Madison. And what I was, what I took away from it, and, you know, I've been someone... And what I was, what I took away from it, and, you know, I've been someone who's advocated for the small neighborhood schools since before I got on the board, and now as a member of the board. And what I took away from that was the people at Madison, the staff members working there now, have already done all of the things we say we wanna do with these new buildings in their small buildings. They're collaborating despite only having one, you know, teacher per section. They are caring for the students. They have built the type of community that we are only dreaming of with this plan. And instead of taking that and saying, how can we support that? How can we build from that? How can we support them there with this money that we're going to take to use to close down their school? We're, again, just ignoring the other alternatives. And so that's what I took away from this, the Harrison history piece and the Harrison neighborhood piece, the wraparound services. I, I'm, I'm sure the staff at Harrison has similar stories to the staff at Madison. But instead of looking at this as, how do we support what's working now in these places, in these neighborhoods? How do we build better? We are saying, the only option is to close down a school. And I just, I don't think that's the reality. So I hope we can get back to Director Borcheting's motion, motion, motion. If not, I'll make the motion myself, but.
There's a motion, so I'm waiting for, is there a second?
I second the motion.
So we'll go to a roll call vote on that unless there's further discussion on the motion? It's to table the vote until the, the May board meeting? Which is scheduled for the eighth, right, May, Monday?
Oh, say that again, President Timinsky, I couldn't hear you.
Motion, I believe, Director Borcheting, correct me if I'm wrong, is to table the vote from tonight to the, to the May board meeting, which is in a few weeks.
Correct.
So voting on the third, this, the new option that's been presented to us, is that, is that what it is, Doctor?
If it passes, then the vote will be delayed. If the motion does not pass, then we would go back to voting on the option that is on the table. Director Newman?
What information will be available to us between now and the next board meeting if we do this?
I suppose that would be a request that, you know, I mean, maybe af, if, once we vote on this, what additional information are people looking for in the past when we voted to table? I mean, that's certainly the consideration. What I feel like I'm hearing, and, and I get, I, I wanna just, you know, echo acknowledging, having served on committees and knowing how much work it is and how much time it takes to serve on those, to acknowledge that hard work. That is something absolutely that we should be taking into account. Cuz that's a big ask, and people stop saying yes to these things when their work isn't valued. So I hear you there. I also acknowledge the presentation that was given at the last board meeting, and your team did what you said you would do, which is go to the listening sessions, invite people to participate. They were well-attended. The surveys were thorough. I know that we had requests to get the full information, not a summary. That information was presented to us. So these are not popular decisions. I think we can acknowledge that they're very difficult decisions to make. But I support the recommendation. But again, there's a motion on the table with a second, so. Director Garlock?
Yeah, I, I guess I, before we take this vote, would like to know a little more specifically what information the board needs to have in order to be able to make an informed decision the next time? Do, are we requesting another community survey? Are we requesting more community meetings? Are we requesting the, the committee come back together, like?
I would be satisfied with another survey, the same survey. With the same questions. I think, I think they have to be the same questions.
Are we asking?
And they're broad questions, but I think they have to be the same questions for us to be able to compare what information we've already have and, and new information as well.
Okay, so are we asking now with three options?
Yep.
Or are we asking with a, a new building on the Harrison site or a renovation on the Harrison site? Is, is that the ask, or are we also still including Madison?
And I.
I mean, I, I don't know why we're stuck.
The motion that I'm making would be to explore the three options that have been presented to the board. So that would be the renovation, an addition on the Harrison site, a new building on the Harrison site, or a new building on the Madison site, with the same survey given out, the same questions.
The questions, and I know that there were some of the comments, some of the feedback from staff and from others. I think that is available. Can that be shared?
Uh, yeah, so we did share this information of the new concept with the Harrison and Madison staff on Friday, and we did ask them to submit any questions or comments that they would have as it relates to it. And I just really do wanna applaud both of, both of the staff members. The questions that have come in so far from the Madison staff, they, what does administration and staffing look like during the transition year? Uh, we've heard next school year would be status quo, but we also heard rumors of collaboration with both staff. Can we be assured that next year would truly be a status quo year? How will we go about naming the new school? When will we know a plan for students during the 24, 25 school year? Get any input on this? Those were the questions from Madison. Let me pull up the questions from Harrison. And the questions from Harrison. Will the new school be designed to look like our current building? How will we decide which historic elements will be repurposed? Who will make these decisions? Could the two time capsules be opened and then resealed and placed in the building with another time capsule from Madison and one from Harrison as well? Could the bricks be used for a walkway or a retaining wall or a sitting wall on the playground? Um, they also asked about, is it Mr. Gary Zavoski? Okay, thank you. Um, he has been at Harrison longer than anyone, anyone alive who has gone to Harrison knows about Mr. Gary. And Harrison and Mr. Garrison, Mr. Gary are synonymous. Is there any way possible to honor his dedication with the new building? His whole life has been and still is at Harrison. Is it possible for current employees to be given a brick to honor the historical presence of Harrison? The huge glass windows upstairs at the north and the south are beautiful, and they let in a ton of light. The rendering in the presentation the board makes, it seems as though the front entrance is being relocated. Does it have to be? Can the brick be used to make the front entryway of the new building? Is the design of the building going to look like the current one? What about the chunks of marble? Will we be able to use that again? It seems as though Madison staff wants noth, I'm sorry, wants nothing to do with Harrison staff working together, collaborating. How will the district support and fix the mindsets to bring the two campuses together? Uh, when will we get to see the new design? Uh, will any effort be made to save the trees? What is the process for naming the new school? How will we, uh, will we, how will they be preserving the historical aspect of the school? Will Harrison be a leader in me school going forward? If Madison staff don't want to work on the new site, will they be given an option to transfer? So again, no matter how tough this is, and I think the, the best comment I heard was from a student at one of the listening sessions. And he said, what will happen to the teachers? And it was a teacher that said, we will go wherever you are. So I just want you to know that this is what we receive back from our staff at both of those schools that will be working. They are thinking about the future and how do we make this work?
There's a motion. I believe there, was there a second?
Yes, second.
So we'll go to a roll call vote on the motion.
Okay, Director Merschbrah?
Aye.
Director Newman?
No.
Director Humbles?
No.
Director Roundtree?
No.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Timinsky? Director Garlock?
No.
Uh, so we'll do a roll call vote on the current motion that was, was on the agenda originally, which is in support of the recommendation from, from staff for a new building on Harrison site. And so you will do a roll call vote.
Director Merschbrah?
No.
Newman?
Aye.
Director Humbles? Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
President Timinsky?
Aye.
Vice President Garlock?
Aye.
Thank you for the presentation.
Uh, moving on to administration, we have the approval of publication and scheduling of a public hearing for the fiscal year 23 budget amendment. Are there any questions for Carla?
Carla, I never got an email about those administrative line costs from last meeting. I never followed up either, but I don't know if you remember my question.
Do it. Carla, if I can get you the volume, okay? Sorry, no, you're fine.
Um, I sent those to Laurel.
Okay.
Um.
I may have missed it, so if I did, I apologize.
Should I send them to Ryan, should I send them to you or Heather? I'll send them to, I'll, I'll forward that email to Ryan tonight yet, and he'll get that off to you.
Thank you.
It's all, I had it all split out.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh, thanks. Other questions?
Any additional questions for Carla? Thank you, Carla.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Uh, next up is a summary, you know, just a little follow-up from our special board meeting that was a work session held on April 7. I'll keep this brief, but just for the, the public's sake, I mean, we had coordinated a work session on April 7 with super, with superintendent. And some folks that she had brought in from, from the Broad, I believe it's called the Broad Institute, correct? Um, from Yale, and, uh, board members were, were invited. So a few things that we covered, and I certainly would turn it over to board members for any additional comments. I thought personally that it was extremely effective to have a new superintendent sit down with the board and just, you know, provide some guidelines, just the way that we work together. So in that process of, of interviewing new superintendents, we were given an entry plan. Obviously, the district has had a strategic plan for, for quite some time, showing some alignment between those two things. And we talk a lot about board governance, so I thought this was a new, different way to talk about a subject that sometimes seems to get stale, quite frankly, with, for some folks. But the difference between governance and what a governance board is and what management is, and where those differences lie, I think is extremely important for us to talk about. So showing some alignment between what Dr. Grover had presented in her entry plan and, and looking at what we already had in our strategic plan. Um, I think we were hearing pretty consistently that we had a strong strategic plan. I know that's the way we, we feel as well. A lot of work has gone into that, and certainly it's worth taking a, a constant look at. But the opportunity for us to look at some of the things in the entry plan and then, you know, some of the ways that we can, we can look at our strategic plan going forward. There was some other things too that I think are worth noting, just as far as, you know, you know, outcomes and just, you know, going forward, kinda what we're looking for. Um, I think that in our discussion, communication was certainly an area that we want to have at a, as a priority focus in the immediate future. Talking about student behavior, trauma and safety, just safety overall. Um, again, safety is something you'll see clearly in our strategic plan. But making sure that that gets addressed here in the, in the immediate term. Recruitment and retention is another focus in the immediate future. And then career in college ready is, is, is another one. DEI was also listed. Um, some other things that came up, distribution of management resources, innovation alignment of resources. And then future ready appears again, just as a priority item. So as we look at our work going forward, you know, as a board aligned with our superintendent and, and administration, you know, some of the focus areas, I think that was really felt like the goal, of getting us all on the same page, make sure that we're moving together. Like, we talk about a team of eight, and I think working together as a team of eight is really important, so. I think that's really just the, you know, again, a brief summary. Just wanted to acknowledge, I thought it was a really important step that this board took. It was part of, I think, what Hazard, Young and Associates had recommended and was gonna be part of bringing on a new superintendent. But because of the relationships that you had, Dr. Grover, we were able to bring in a few resources at no cost to the district. And I was, I know I was thoroughly impressed with their ability to facilitate a group and, and guide us towards some, some logical outcomes. So just don't know if there's any board members additional comments?
Comment I would add is, I wasn't able to attend, I had a COVID diagnosis at the time. And so, um, I don't know, the best place to add public health response to the strategic plan, but I think that's something we, um, kind of controversial to talk about sometimes, but I think we need to get back to there cuz it's important, vaccinations, you know, just the whole, the whole gamut.
And I think I, I feel like some of that discussion that we had just around overall safety, you know, I mean, it's just a very broad topic. It's, it, it might seem like it's just one word, but there's lots of ways for us to address safety. So I think that was, um, public health is certainly one of those things for us to continue to consider. Good. Director Garlock?
Yeah, I just wanna thank everyone on the board and, and Dr. Grover and our facilitators for the work that we did that day. I, I, I truly felt like it was time well-spent. It felt like we were sort of resetting a little bit and grounding ourselves in our work and remembering why we are here. I, I do think that we all had very inform, informative and lively discussions that day about the strategic plan and our, our vision for what's coming next. I, like, I'm looking forward to doing more work like that, and I hope we can find time in our schedules to do that. I think it's just imperative for all of us to sit down together. And, and as Director Merschbrah referred to earlier, it, it's a time to look at some of those other issues that don't necessarily come to the board table specifically, but some of the broader issues, and that's a, it's an excellent opportunity to do that. So thank you to everyone who organized that.
Additional comments? I will now move to closed session evaluation. Is there a motion? Uh, do we have a second? This is a roll call vote.
Director Merschbrah?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
President Timinsky?
Aye.
Vice President Garlock?
Aye.
Uh, we will now move to closed session. A five-minute break? Sure.